All right, good morning. We'll call the Vigo County Capital Improvement Board to order. If this is your first time sitting up here, this is in 2014 where the CIB started, 2015, with John and Greg and several people, Indiana State University. And Tammy walked out of the room, but I can't explain to you guys how important she is to the CIB and the billing, the organizational needs and stuff like that, and what she's done over those years for the CIB. So if you see her, make sure you tell her thank you because she does a lot for the board and gets no pay for it. So we've been trying to change that for a couple of years, but so far I've not had too much luck with accounts on that. So Brady, everybody knows Brady, you want to call the roll, please?
Sure, Chris Switzer.
Here.
John Marvel, Brian Coestro, Karen Dyer, Tony Brewer, Emily Crapo, and Brandon Sagwa.
Here.
All right, six present, one absent. Emily did text me this morning, she wouldn't be here. There was initially, Eddie had sent out an agenda that did not include the audit in the 2026 budget. Tenille and Dave and Martel had mentioned they wanted to speak to that, so I did add that this morning. Eddie did as well with the agendas he brought, so that is the one addition that I had. Anybody else have anything? Okay, seeing none. We'll need to approve the minutes from May 28th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll get right into it here. Dave or Martel, who's going to update the Convention Center management?
I guess.
Okay. If you would, come to the microphone, Martel, that way we can get everything recorded.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Martel Wilson. I represent the Convention Center today along with Dave Anderson, who is a senior VP out of West Palm Beach. He tried to make it in last night, but West Palm Beach got some horrendous storms and the airport was closed even, so he wasn't able. But Zoom-wise, it's perfect. So you have the June report, you also have the May report due to the cancellation of the May meeting. In the month of June, the Convention Center hosted 18 events. They accounted for 19 event days, and the total attendance is estimated at 2,147. The gross revenue is approximately 119,000 in the month of June. And you'll see on the other side of the page, the June events that took place, a couple notations on those. Purdue University, who had never been here before, said they loved the venue and they would definitely come back. The Indiana Principal Leadership was the two-day event that we had, and they are already booked for 2026, another two-day Going over to the operations side, the maintenance, one of the headache bars in the garage fell, like just fell, and operations repaired and repainted it. Also various repairs in back of the house, and Sycamore Engineering installed an additional sprayer in the dishwashing area. A couple of incidents of note, we, an individual from the Holman Plaza Building dropped their keys down the elevator shaft. Luckily, a tech was in town and was able to get here within a couple hours. The tech offered a complimentary service since it was the first occurrence, otherwise the cost would have been given to the consumer, which was about $450 estimate. So it pays to hold on to your keys and your phones and your credit cards and things like that. Also, on June 18th, we had a tornado watch, and the group in-house had left about an hour prior to that tornado watch, so all of the guests were gone. It was just staff cleaning up, and there was one patron from the museum that had to go back to house and on lockdown, basically, for that watch. Sales and marketing, during the month of June contracted nine definite events, totally about 20,000 in short-term business, and the team is currently working on 34 tentative leads with more than 500,000 in potential revenue with an estimated 1,385 hotel room nights. As a side note, at the bottom of that page, we did secure our Wi-Fi sponsorship again with WTWO, so that trade is from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2028. The initiatives on the next page, sales and marketing, just some examples of what we participated, Coffee and Connections, and we have had, Envisionary was one of our Coffee and Connections sponsors, and they did provide complimentary headshots for everybody who attended, including the Convention Center staff. So if you'll take a look at our website, you'll know some of the pictures are a little bit more updated. And then our sales team and our general manager, Tenille, did participate in the Strawberry Festival. Thanks to Casey, they were able to make a go of that day again this year when, you know, initially they thought that it wouldn't be. We've got some advertising and promotions page. Our banquet manager, Ian, and our event manager Bailey did attend the IAVM, and it's a national conference located, it was located in San Diego this year. It's a full-blown class, like all week for five or six days. They even had to take several tests to pass and make sure that they were learning what they were there for. June analytics, number of clicks, Meeting Planners International, also the email performance with MailChimp is an 8% click rate. Next page on our stats, the total revenue in the funnel is about 1.376 million with estimated hotel room nights of 4,002. And then on the attendance by event and gross revenue, banquets continue to be our leader in that due to the number of people that attend those events.
Martel, can we pause there for a second?
Absolutely.
So looking at 2025 event stats, specifically gross revenue by month, year-over-year in 2025 pace, obviously really strong performance in May and June, beating expectations as well as previous year's revenue.
Right.
Looking ahead, it seems like we're going to remain close. Would like to look at November. I think November is the one month I see remaining for the year where our projected is a little bit behind previous years. Is there a plan behind that or a conversation to help kind of close that gap?
I know that they, the sales team is going out on several, what do you call it, where they go to visit the clients. So they are planning that for early fall, and hopefully they can drum up some business that for the November timeframe.
Yep.
In November, every year, so we have been next year, almost all of the information that we can possibly do, so it's very hard to, so we get one more time.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. That's a good, that's a, yeah, I would not have put those together. Okay, that, then that's actually good news overall for the community. Obviously, it will impact the November sales outside of meetings and banquets, but thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Second question that I will have, on that note, actually, Karen, I'm happy you said that. When we looked at track number of hotel rooms consumed by month, I would then go on to say, then we could assume that the November consumed hotel rooms for the CIB would be a decrease because they would theoretically be completely filled for cross-country. Okay. And that'll, because I'm sure that'll pop up in a few months, I might forget, but that's, that's good to see. So even though some hotel room stuff's coming down, overall revenue's going up.
Right.
And the need for hotels today will hopefully continue to be addressed throughout the city, especially downtown, and we look forward to that.
Not many people want to book a convention, very few. Any other further questions on that?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
And then you'll see the bar graph stats for events and parking and gross revenue by month, year-over-year. You'll notice in May, we had that very sharp increase in the gross revenue. May revenue was approximately 173,000. So we did very well in May for revenue. And then it goes through some of the event stats and economic impact, which you'll come across again when you look at the qualitative information that is presented in your packet. Going down to the monthly summary, the Larry Bird Museum, the CVB, thank you. We did provide squish balls to be given out to the museum for the commemorative anniversary. And the museum was also a location for the scavenger hunt through West Central Partnerships. The kids had to shoot a free throw to get the clue to the next location, so that made it a little fun and interactive. And then on the marketing side, there is additional signage and billboards. I don't know if you've seen them yet, the billboard locations, and then the interstate exit signage for trailblazing and two main line signs were, have been added. So the locations are there. Hopefully, I think they're around the new rest areas or the welcome centers. There, the bottom of that last page on the marketing, two separate groups of Australian visitors did visit the museum this, this month in June. They were on their way to one of the Pacer Gapes. Any questions or comments?
No, just about, your signage, Martel, is really good on the interstate.
Yes.
I did reach out to Endot. They're considering putting the Larry Bird Museum on the wayfinding signage on the interstate, also Terre Haute Children's Museum as well, so. But that is one heck of a process to get that stuff put on there, so.
It is. It is.
I'm glad you were doing that.
Yeah.
One of the billboards is the one that we pay for, but it rotates. The other thing I will say is the Indiana Fever came over and selected Terre Haute as a site because of Larry Bird Museum and Larry Bird's legacy for one of their scavenger hunt things in advance of the All-Star Championships in Indy. So that was good publicity for Terre Haute.
Okay. Any other questions for Martel? Well, probably, she'll be up here speaking quite a bit, probably, or Dave will here in a couple of minutes, so. All right, thank you, Martel.
Thank you.
All right, Kyle, if you're still online, I see your smiling face there, so if you want to give us a brief update on the operating budget and the cash flow.
Yes, thanks for having me today. This is Kyle Carlson with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisor for the CIB. So if we, we jump into the cash flow on page two, you'll notice in June, there was not a whole bunch of expenses, really just the utility costs that was paid. And at the end of June, your cash balance is about 5.2 million, and your available cash is just over 4.7 million. You'll notice at the top that the city provided their $250,000 contribution in June, as expected. And I did notice that the bond payment was made in July already for the Convention Center bonds for that. One of the changes that we made since last meeting was we've, on the next page, we've broken out 2026, three, by month, by month. On the revenue side, we've, we've left it constant compared back to 2025. Basically, you know, if you had an April 2026 revenue that you see $268,000, that represents the April 2025 revenue. So we've kept the food and beverage constant. With the disbursements, we've been a little bit more conservative and included, incorporated inflationary increases ranging from 3% to 10% on various line items, specifically 3% on the insurance premiums. And that's, I believe, oh, and then Oakview budget, for the operating account transfers, we've used the information in Oakview Group's budget, but it is just one month in arrears, so it's kind of looked at any reimbursement one month behind then, the negative balance. And that's really all the updates that I have. I can open up the questions if you guys want to talk about anything specifically.
Mayor, anything you want to discuss?
One quick question. Can you, the June food and beverage tax revenue, was that, do you have the, I know you sent it out via email. I apologize, I don't have it pulled up, but was it more or less than 2024?
Oh, yes. June was 295,000 compared to June in 2024 of 286,000. So, so far in 2025, there's been a 4% increase in food and beverage. And last year, there was a 1% increase, which was kind of the low year for 2024. So obviously, if we're showing level food and beverage tax from 25 to 26, that would be conservative. Yeah.
Thank you.
Kyle, I've got a question. On available cash in 2025 for June, we're at 4.7 million, and your 26 projection for June is 4.1. Is that because you kept revenues flat and expenses have increased, or why, why the $600,000 difference in cash?
Are you talking about year-to-years, June to June?
Yes.
Kyle, I think the number one there is the ready, the River Project Art Spaces Ready Match accounts for 450 of the 600 in question.
Okay.
And then the remaining 150 is their actuator for inflationary costs for expenses. And then there was a, we were very deliberate to add the miscellaneous expense line throughout the entire calendar year of 2026, which accounts for roughly 60 there. But the, the number one cost, sorry, the number one calculation within that 600 is the River Project Art Spaces Ready Match of 450.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
And we probably.
Yes, and we, we're showing for 2026, Oakview Group having reimbursements of around 1.3 million, which hopefully that's conservative as well, and this looks better as, you know, you go month to month. I know there's been 615,000 of reimbursements this year, which is lower than the budget, I would say, for 25.
That's good information. Any other questions for Kyle? All right, thank you, Kyle. Appreciate you sticking around. Eddie, any legal updates right now?
I'll be very brief. You'll see with the contract you're asked to vote on later that it's, it's really an emergency spend that the members are going to be asked to vote on. Looking back at the bylaws for this board as a whole, I think it's worth looking at this, a few changes or updates. It hasn't been changed in the past seven years. One of those I would propose would be giving the president authority to enter into contracts for less than $50,000 on an emergency basis. Primary reason being, we only meet at least monthly, and sometimes we're going two months at a time. That would facilitate whomever the president is to go ahead and get anything that needs to be done moving without having to wait on, on another actual formal meeting to vote on it. And there's a couple other little tweaks that, that could be updated. So my suggestion is to the members, if there's anything you would like to see, I'd like to, over the next several months, bring a proposal to the board just to update and amend those bylaws.
I think one bylaw that we'll take a look at is attendance. It's kind of like consecutive meetings back-to-back-to-back, so we'll have a conversation about that.
Absolutely. And doing them all at once helps, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. I believe it was in May, we passed one of the benchmark requests for OVG, and we tabled another. There were some questions around some things. I know Brian had a couple questions for Tenille. Today would be the opportunity to take action on, is it the qualitative? Yeah. Agreement. So Dave, Martel, you want to touch on that a little bit and kind of tell us what we're still talking about here, and then the CIB can decide to take action today or not?
So the qualitative.
Got to come back to the mic, I'm sorry. New recording requirements, and then for the members, if you make sure you have your mics on, too.
So the qualitative is based on measurable performance, and on that, you have a two-page document front and back, and it has the amount up to 25,000, which is based on a percentage scoring. So if you feel that we achieve 20%, then that would be 5%, $5,000 of that 25,000 on customer satisfaction. And you can kind of go down and see what the customer satisfaction, achievement and economic impact, achievement of annual event, community stakeholder, repairs and maintenance, and quality of management. And each one of those are listed for the explanation of what you look for, or what the previous members have looked for regarding the percentage and scoring max associated with that qualitative.
So the ask on the table is that monetary number of $21,677, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry. So that was the financial.
Okay.
That was the financial incentive. I apologize.
Okay.
So the qualitative is $5,000 for customer satisfaction, achievement and economic impact, and then 3,750 for the remaining. So up to 25,000, but the, the maximum is based on percentages of achievement.
Yep, I'm sorry. I see that now. My bad.
Okay. Dave, did you have anything to add to the qualitative?
No. I mean, based on the email, well, first of all, good morning, everybody, and my apologies for not being there in person. I was boarding a plane last night and the sky suddenly went totally dark, and the airport closed for three hours, so it was a little interesting. But the, as Martel said, I mean, basically, you're, you're voting based on the 2024 performance, and Tenille had submitted a memo, I think it was dated February 12th, which was the summary of each of the categories as it relates to surveys and everything else we're rated on. So what we're looking for is just a final approval in our incentive from last year based on our performance.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any questions or comments from the board members, from Martel or Dave?
Yeah, I'll go first. So I feel comfortable today with the qualitative amount of 25,000, but moving into 2026, of those lines listed, one that I will look at a little bit more throughout the year is achievement of annual event and fiscal goals. I think from a revenue standpoint, it continues to show increases, which we are happy to see. However, when it comes to the expense side, that's something that we'll just, I'm personally going to be watching a little bit more. And I get it, some of those expenses are outside of your control. We deal with employees, salaries as well as insurance a lot as well. Chris and I, actually frankly, everyone on this board. But at the end of the day, when, you know, government dollars are being used, it's, it's a very difficult conversation, but trying to consolidate positions as much as possible, spread out the workload, and maintain those costs, which is near impossible, and I do understand that. But that is something that I think we'll, we'll take a look at more throughout next year.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I could just respond to that, first of all, thank you for the comments and thank you for your time. I think it was about a month ago when you and I and Tenille had a chance to kind of go through the budget in detail and kind of talk about expense. I think the team has done a great job at building the base business at the facility. We're starting to see some clients that are now continuously using the Convention Center, which is now, so we know that business is actually coming, and it's a base, and the base continues to rise, which is great. But, but to your point, you know, we need to continue to drive revenue to cover that expense, because just basic expense increases these days for benefits and insurance and everything else are rising. So that is definitely the goal. And then on the expense side, I think when we talked to you, we showed that, you know, we're running, we're running thin as we can be there, but, but we understand the, the goals of the CIB, and we want to maintain or decrease that deficit. So the good news is we're seeing those increases in revenue, both in the F and B and ancillary side, but we, we will definitely keep an eye on the expense side on a daily basis.
Brian?
So I went through the, the formula for the qualitative incentive. There's six components, a weighted score, and on three of the six, I couldn't find any issues, so I, I left it at the full amount. The other three, however, I reduced it slightly, and I'll kind of walk through that. The first one, customer satisfaction, I looked at the Google score, I think it was four, six, or four, seven, which is really good. I did talk to some people locally and got a little bit of feedback, and I've shared this with Tenille previously, that the proposals and the invoicing system is confusing to, you know, folks that are using the Convention Center. So if we can make some improvement there to, to make the two maybe look similar, feel similar, as, as they go from a proposal to, you know, an actual contract. So I'd like to see some improvement there. So I took that from 20% down to 15. The next item, economic impact goals, again, I took it from 20 down to 15. I just, I, I feel, you know, we've got to keep pursuing more conventions, which I understand somewhat hamstrung at, at this point with the number of hotel rooms, but the end of the day, I'm kind of a results guy, and I, I get it, there's reasons why, but, you know, I think that's the, the overarching goal of the Convention Center is to host, host conventions and fill hotel rooms. So again, I took that from 20 down to 15. And then the third item, to kind of echo the mayor sentiments, the fiscal goals, I took it from 15 down to five for the same reasons you mentioned. I think our revenue is good, but I did a little bit of research on what I would consider peer facilities, and their expenses on our, I think the, the metric is per square foot of sellable area. The expense per square foot of sellable area, and I think we're, you know, we're higher than our peers. I'm sure there's reasons for that, but regardless, I took that from 15 down to five. You run the math, and it is a total rating of 80% of the 25, which results in a $20,000 payment rather than the 25. So that's, that's how I wound up where I am.
I think the, the only one I'd push back on there is the customer satisfaction metric, just because the formula utilizing the Google stars is kind of set the way it is. Acknowledge the local feedback have gotten the same, but that is one that I'm like, based off of what's in the contract, how it's written, and the rating of the facility itself, I would prefer that one to stay at 20%. That's just my personal comment on that. I will, however, go with the board, the rest of the board feels, to take it down to 15.
Yeah, Karen, go ahead.
Could you speak to what is, you're working on to get more conventions? When you look at the report, the conventions are very low compared to meetings and banquets. I agree with Brian that we need more conventions, and I think the 3354 number for hotel rooms is good, but we have 2,000 available hotel rooms every day. So when it's 3,000 hotel rooms, there's a lot more inventory than that. So I think we have a lot of ability to fill more hotel rooms and have more conventions. So I know the team's working on that, but I do think that we haven't met, quite met that benchmark. So could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, I'll start. I know that Tenille has mentioned in the past that conventions typically go on a two-to-three-year plan of circling the state or circling the nation. So we're coming upon that, that mark of trying to get those people here. One of the obstacles I know is booking the hotel room. Of course, they want pretty much a guaranteed rate, and some of the hotels in the area will, will only go so far. So we, in fact, lose that, that group because they can't guarantee the rate. So, yeah, go ahead.
You're saying out past a year?
Yes. Yes, out past a year. So, because they, they typically run and booky 15 to 16 months for prior to an event.
Karen, is that something you think you could get involved in and address on the hotel side? I'm not sure if that's the CIB can.
It is something that we discuss about the hotels, not wanting to book too far out in advance yet. They were all booked for They were all booked for cross-country, but more than a year in advance. So I'm not sure. I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Dave, did you have anything?
Yeah, if I could just really quick, first of all, Brian, thanks for the comments. As it relates to the hotels in the business, economic impact, you're spot on. All of you are spot on. That is really the goal. When the facility was envisioned was to bring economic impact to the community, not only the building, but the entire community. So, you know, you basically need both to be successful. So we need the short-term business, which is really doing well, to drive day-to-day revenue and some economic impact. But the long-term business is really what we're after. You know, I think it's, I think Martell's comments were spot on. But also the competitive environment, and I'm going to speak from a higher level. The competitive environment in communities these days is getting more and more aggressive, where dollars are being set aside for incentives and specific marketing campaigns, very aggressive marketing campaigns. And while Tanil and her team have done a great job, we need to continue to look at that. And it's kind of playing the balancing act between controlling expense and also looking at some of this spend on attendance at certain trade shows, certain potential incentives. And then also the room package is trying to get something a little bit more coordinated that we can actually offer there on the street. So we've had some success, but we definitely can ramp that up. And at the end of the day, that's really what the goal is, is to drive that impact. So we hear you loud and clear. I think at some point, we'd love to kind of come back to you specifically on that point with kind of a market view of what's going on and then where we're going with it, so we can kind of give you a snapshot of where we're at, so everybody's clear on it.
Thank you. If we could honestly, I think what would be helpful is by the October-November timeframe, have a conversation or get an update from OBG on, hey, here are the two to three specific changes that we've made to help with hotel rooms and convention center recruitment. On the note of marketing, if there's a peer facility that you recommend, you know, we adjust to their marketing plan versus ours, maybe bring that up to us at that time period as well, so we can review their marketing plan compared to ours and see if adjustments need to be made. That would give us two clear goals to help improve where we're at of trying to get more long-term business, acknowledging that we do get some short-term, really good short-term business.
Yeah, Mayor, we'll definitely do that. And the other thing, and this is absolutely not to make any excuse because every city is facing it, is this development situation is, again, I am seeing a lot of communities moving very fast as it relates to hotel development. So it could be 150 rooms, 250 rooms, where they're adding on additional hotels in the area. And I know that's our plan here. So again, you know, it's kind of, we're going to work as hard as we can with the asset mix that we have. But if we do get any footing with kind of seriously getting things moving with any additional rooms near the building, I guarantee you it has an immediate effect. But we'll come back to you with those updates, absolutely.
So then it would be safe to say that a city council needs to be hyper-aware of the clear need to increase hotel rooms in relation to downtown to benefit the convention center as well as the downtown area? Would that be a good statement to say?
Yeah, Mayor, absolutely. You know, where hotels and convention centers, we're just always the talk of large cities. It's now the talk of cities like Terre Haute, you know, and in Kansas and in Kentucky. And these smaller cities are building conference centers, they're building sports, sports centers, you know, to host basketball, volleyball, everything else. And then they're building hotels in that mix to be able to house those people. So, you know, we have a great partner in the hotel next door. They've been wonderful. And we do have hotels within the area. We just need to continue that development because it definitely is what's happening. And I can bring some additional information to the fall meeting that will kind of show some of these cities and actually what they're doing. So at least we can get a kind of a look at it.
Thank you.
I'll add to Brian's comment. Former Commissioner John Marvel and I were speaking right before this. Our fear is without another hotel, the convention center could become stagnant, that what it is now is the best it could be without the additional hotel room space. So it is important that the whole community knows, not just the city council, but the county council, all local leadership, and the individuals in the community, that your food and beverage revenue operates the convention center. But a hotel downtown only makes that so much better, so we can capture more money and do more things in the community as it relates to tourism and significant projects like that. So we got to keep that push. John?
Mr. President, if I could, it's true, we need more hotel space, more rooms, and not just outside of, you know, 7th and 8th and Wabash, but all over. But more important to the convention center is the rooms that are actually within the same perimeter of the convention center to continue the growth. And as everybody can see, we are growing, but at some point in time, and it's going to be real soon, we're going to be, like the president said, at a static point. Where we've just done all we can getting what we have now coming in. And one final thing I'd like to say is about our scoring system. And frankly, the three of us up here on the dais would agree with the rubber chicken route. When we first sat down to talk about the convention center, my main point was not hotel rooms at that time, but what we're feeding the folks who are coming to the center to a convention or to a meeting. I wanted that food to be as best as it could be. Certainly, we're not going to be serving lobster and crab, but something other than just a rubber chicken sandwich that we've all suffered through, and myself more than the other two, because I've got more years in politics. But I would like to see that 15% in the scoring thing. We've got to give this convention center 100%, 150% when it comes to the food that they're serving over there. So, thank you.
Yeah, John, thank you very much for that comment. And again, no matter where we end up here, I just want to thank Tanil, who's on a well-deserved vacation, and the staff. We've had a really good core team that has been there since the start. And we've got a number of other people that have come on board. And, you know, convention centers, especially in small towns, you know, sometimes don't get the respect they deserve as it relates to service level and food and things like that. And the team there does a phenomenal job. Very proud of them. And really thank all of you for your support, so.
All right, well, there's been a $20,000 recommendation and a $25,000 recommendation. So any discussion on where this board wants to go with the agreement?
Yeah, I think after having, or listening to Brian's comments, most of which I do agree on, my recommendation would be to approve $21,250 in the change. The change being my thought of the customer satisfaction metrics, because it's based off of the survey, giving them the full 20% max, and then acknowledging the other decreases that Brian had stated, which would land us somewhere in the middle at $21,250.
Any other discussion? Feedback, anything? Is that your motion, Mayor?
So seeing no further discussion, I will make a motion to approve a qualitative invoice for OBG management of $21,250.
Is there a second? Okay, motion's been made by Mayor Sacman, a second by Vice President John Marvel. Brady will do a roll call on this one.
Chris Schweitzer.
Aye.
John Marvel.
Aye.
Brian Coystro. Karen Dyer. Tony Brewer. Emily Crapo. And Brandon Sacman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to one.
Thanks very much, everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Martell.
Yep.
Appreciate it. All right, you might as well stay up there.
You can just hit the mic.
And Jack, we're only one thing away here, so we'll get to you here in just a second. All right, so typically, I present the annual budget of the CIB to the Vigo County Council. The council does not make any changes because this budget is approved by the CIB in partnership with OBG 360 and Dave and his group. So the convention center management has done a great job every year of auditing themselves, and they always have great feedback, and we've never had any issues. And the 2026 budget has been presented as well. So Dave or Martell, if you want to, you know, briefly touch on both of those things, that'd be great.
So in your packet, I'm sorry, in your packet, you have an organizational chart showing the employees and positions. As noted in the comments for this packet, many of the employees do dual roles, considering sales and sales. They do also the marketing end of it. The food and beverage does the sous chef and all of their, the, sorry, the executive chef. Planning, ordering, usually you have other counterparts doing all of those roles. Finance, I also do a little bit of HR. So we do dual roles to try and reduce those numbers. And then regarding the comments or the information in the packet, you have the summary on the income statement, which is page three of your budget. And then for each department, they're listed following. So you've got the executive department and the comments associated with those of why there was a change regarding increases or benefits or things like that. Then finance, and then it goes down the line for each department. That was a really overview. I'm not going to read this to you, but if you have a question regarding a specific area of concern, then Dave and I can pick you up.
I think one thing I'll start with is, and I would ask the board to review the organizational chart. I had a previous meeting with Dave and Tanil where I pretty aggressively attacked staffing numbers, specifically, you know, from the operations side. They did a good job of putting this organizational chart together, but they also added descriptions of how many of the individuals are doing two or three roles sometimes to help reduce operating costs. I think a great example is the museum coordinator, what looks like on paper as a museum coordinator. Our museum coordinator also does a lot of the graphic designs, the brochures, and the marketing for the convention center, which it sounds like we'll have a conversation about in the fall to hopefully improve that individual's ability to do that. So I do want to thank you all for putting that together. I think that really helped me not just conceptualize it, but really understand, because there were some costs there that I did bring up, hoping to reduce, only to understand, well, you know, we've already kind of dogged the structure in and of itself. So I felt comfortable there. Thank you.
Any questions about the 2026 proposed budget? Because if we can, I would like to take action to approve that budget. That way I can move forward with presenting to the county council.
While you guys are looking at it, I'd also like to thank Martell. State Board of Accounts is needing some solid information. And I got a hold of Martell, and she got to me to be aware of the state board accounts. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Stephen.
Great.
I do have one question. So on page 11, event services. So looking at employee benefits, that line went from $42,802 to $62,980. When you flip over to page nine, we saw about a $5,480 increase for those employee benefits under marketing and sales.
Right.
So can you walk us through, because it's with the 8% budget increase, I'm having a hard time seeing how that was a $20,000 jump.
Absolutely. So in 2023, we did not, or 2024, apologize. We did not have two full-time event services people that were participating in our benefit program. In 2026, we anticipate that, and they have started already, in 2026, they will be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Looks like on page three, pretty much spells out everything for their budget draft. There's no questions would entertain a motion to approve the 2026 proposed budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2026 budget.
Is there a second? All right, motion's been made by Mayor Sacman, second by John Marvel. Any other discussion about the budget or any questions for Dave or Martell?
Just a quick comment. I would, I prefer if we did a six-month budget update next year around the June timeframe. One thing that we're doing in the city is, we do these actually every single week. We track the percentage of revenue and percentage of expenses. And then each department head is required to brief that once a month. Their month's expenses and how it projects for the entire year. I think, though, with the way this management's going, obviously, it's a much smaller organization. We can get away with just one in June, so I would request at the June CIB meeting that we kind of do a budget update. Here's where we're at on revenue for the entire year. Here's where we're at on expenses by department. I think one thing we'll really be looking at is part-time wages, because we did see a jump there, which makes sense, as well as the insurance costs as well.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Forgive me, but how did we do on last year's budget? Did we meet budget expectations?
Everything is fine. Yeah. Any questions, Brian? Comments? John, anything? Tony, Mr. Brewer, anything?
No, I was, I was, I'm sorry. If we're going to be voting on budget items, can we get that out about a week in advance so we can have a chance to review it? It's like the previous item, I think Brian did his due diligence and looking and reviewing it. I think we should all have an opportunity to review if we're going to be voting on particularly budgets and numbers, at least, you know, a week prior to meetings.
So you prefer a hard copy over email?
Yeah, we've had it for about a month.
I would. I don't have, in my work, I don't have, I don't sit at any desk. I don't have any computers sitting be printing. If you sent it out two months earlier, I still wouldn't print it out. So if you could, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
My only comment is, Tanil and I have a lot of conversations about marketing budgets, and I think that the marketing budget's kind of small. So I know we can't change anything now, but that's something that probably need to work on this year of how to address the ability to market.
I think I'll kind of make a note of, you know, going into next year as we change, you know, roles of president and such, monitoring the expense lines throughout the CIB's budget. Like if our expenses are a little bit lower the first quarter, we should do what we did this year, which is move expenses over to the theater to be able to cover the theater's beginning stage of the roof internally instead of an additional appropriation. So if we follow that same philosophy, if we start landing short, sooner than later, we'll start adjusting to help with the marketing side. I think that's a good comment, and I'll create a plane of action then to watch a couple of lines. So if we need to move something, we can.
All right, any other discussion? Brady, let's do a roll call on this one, too, please.
Sure. Chris Schweitzer.
Aye.
John Marvel.
Aye.
Brian Coystro.
Aye.
Karen Dyer.
Aye.
Tony Brewer. Emily Crapo. And Brandon Sacman.
Aye.
All right, Martell, if you want to, Martell or Dave, if you want to go over your audit just a little bit or touch on anything that you think significant?
Sure. So we had an outside firm, Sackwriter and Company, who is located on Wabash Avenue, performed this year's, or the 2024 audit. There were no immediate concerns. There was a slight issue regarding our sales tax payment in 2024 for the year. Come to find out, I overestimated January's payment, and we have and we have since requested that back from the state, which they had provided. So, I have a credit sitting on our sales tax form right now to be applied to further returns.
It's kind of a question for Chris and Tammy, as well as John, some of the folks who've been on for a while. Can you walk us through, when the state does their audit, their numbers are reported just like every other county department, correct?
Yep, everything.
Okay, and so then we do this on top of that to help find additional points to look at and just maintain fiscal responsibility?
Yeah, we call this a quasi-governmental agency. Obviously, this board is appointed by elected officials with partnership from the CVB. And the Board of Directors makes the decisions. The county council is not involved, other than approving a budget throughout the year. But all of the invoices, the claims, all the information flows through Martell, to Tammy, through the auditor's office, and then gets reported on DLGF and with the State Board of Accounts. Traditionally, the CIB has been the target of State Board of Accounts, not in a bad way. They just want to make sure that these agencies that are separate, but not separate, you know, everything flows to the county, are doing everything they're supposed to do. Vigo County Solid Waste Management's the same way. The Vigo County Public Library is the same way. They particularly audit those almost every single year, and we have a closing.
You are a political subdivision. So, at some point, too, I'll go through and check. If we don't already have an internal control policy, we need to ensure that CIB does have an internal. And so, and if there is, that's perfect. We need to ensure that OBG folks do the annual training. And I'll get you, there's a certificate we should have on file since you are touching money that belongs to the political subdivision.
Good to know. Good to know. And also, as a side note, our, the management company of OBG requires us to do an external audit, too. So.
Got it. That makes sense.
We're encompassing it all around.
And then, kind of final question as it pertains to the audit, but more specific to State Board of Accounts. Are we now caught up for '23 and '24? I know, remember, that was a question when it came to bonding capacity.
Yeah, we're good. Everything's fine. Well, one thing I do appreciate, Martell and Dave, is you guys use a local company to do your audits. Sacwriter's been around for a long time. We appreciate you guys using them, and we have a great relationship with them in county government, too. So, any questions about the audit? It's a lot of information. So, if you have anything, I'm sure Martell would be available to answer any questions. All right? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. We've been busy this one.
All right, now's the fun time. Jack, you're up. No, we don't get that. Just information. Tanille, or Tanille, geez, I got too many T names on my mind. Terry Connolly reached out to have Jack and his team possibly make a financial request of the CIB. But today's kind of just an informational meeting, and if we want to take some action, we'll do that next month.
May I set these here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, good morning. Thank you very, very much for allowing us on short notice to be with you and present to you today. To honor one of the requests, I was listening to your board about having information in advance to make big decisions. I sincerely appreciate that and respect that. And this is the type of conversation, as a board, I would like to have in front of me also a month or two in advance, because ultimately, we're going to be here for a request today. And we'll respect any decision you make, since this is on such short notice. So, I'm Jack Hill, co-founder of Wabash Valley Crew. I've got Mr. Jim Owen here, co-founder of Wabash Valley Crew as well. Want to thank you, and we also want to recognize our partner in the Y, who has worked with us for many years. And Wabash Valley Crew was founded about 10 years ago, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that, and excuse my wife's cheaters. This is what I could find this morning, so just thank you very much. I think I've got control with this. Do you have copies in front of you?
We got it on TV right here.
Oh, awesome. Great, thank you. So, I just want to run through a few things with you. Want to talk a little bit about what's going on, where rowing is within the United States. Then I want to bring it into our realm a little bit, the midsection of the U.S. And I've got some examples for you to share. Going on to the Fairbanks Park Project and where we sit within that. Again, I'm going to back up in a little bit and share a little bit more about our history with some updates and also some barriers we face, and then our request to you today. This is all, this is actually a depiction of every sanctioned rowing program in the United States. There's one sanctioning body, that is the U.S. Rowing Organization. You can see in history is, this is kind of an East Coast sport, going back over a century. And there's been East Coast-West Coast rivalries going back into the probably early 1900s, 1920s or so. Again, huge on the East Coast, gets to the Midwest or midsection, starts to thin out until it picks back up out on the West Coast. I narrowed it for us so I could show you the midsection and where we are. And that highlighted area is the sanctioned program that we all have here in the community that we founded 10 years ago. And I want to just look to the left or west. You see a couple of programs in St. Louis. Going up north towards Chicago, Wisconsin, Minnesota, the programs start to grow again. To the right or east, Big in Ohio. There's a program that partners with us in Indianapolis, at the Indianapolis Rowing Center. And to the south, getting towards Nashville, some programs. And off to the, kind of the bottom left, Oklahoma City. Going to talk about that a little bit as well to share some examples with you. Really, in that picture there, you see no venues. Some places that host an event or two or maybe seven a year. Actually, our friends in Indianapolis have a very nice lake. Maybe a moderately nice boathouse. It's really pretty much just a pole barn that is outfitted very well. They have actually hosted the Big Ten Rowing Championship for women. They have hosted the National Championship for women. It is hit and miss with them, honestly. And from a venue standpoint, it is not ideal. It resides within a park. There are, there are no hotels immediately around it, no restaurants, no real activities for families or kids to participate in while their athletes are performing, which is why I think we have an opportunity here. So, if I may, I just want to take you through a few examples. So, Oklahoma City is probably the greatest. In the 1970s, a club was established. It was three colleges to row within the city there, very, very small scale. Until the 90s, there was a vision put in place to put Oklahoma City on the map as a rowing community. About 10 years after that, they hosted their first event. They brought in thousands of spectators and about 250 rowers. And they have their first race on "new river," and the "new river" is in quotes. And I'm going to show you something here in a moment. First major race two years later. Then a boathouse foundation was formed, and that was the key to transforming the river into a world-class facility. Boathouse opens in 2006. I'll move to the right there. A large boathouse on top of that was built in 2010. I skipped 2009. It became a U.S. Olympic training site for rowing, canoeing, and kayaking. And that's what we're talking about with the Y. It's not just about getting out and rowing. It's about opportunities on the water beyond that. And actually, in the Olympics that will be coming up in a few years in Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Olympics are going to have water-based events hosted in Oklahoma City as part of the Los Angeles Olympics. A most recent study in 2023 shows that all of rowing and water-based activities in Oklahoma City generate about $92 million in economic impact there. Now, that's Oklahoma City. We're not Oklahoma City. We're never going to be Oklahoma City. But this is what that new river used to be. It's a little blurry. I apologize for that. This is pulled directly out of some presentations they have done. It was essentially a dry creek bed that they had. So, when we hear things, when we're rowing with people or introducing the concept of people who may not be rowers that have, whether a lake or a river in their communities, they think, well, our lake isn't set up to host something like that because, or our river is not set up to host something like that because it's crooked or has bends to it. This is what their river looked like before. So, we are way ahead of where Oklahoma City started. And I want to show you what they developed this into over the last 30 years. This is downtown Oklahoma City. And they took their river from being the backyard to the front yard of their community, which is what we think our opportunity is here, working with you all and all the agencies across the county, city, and beyond. This is the most recent boathouse that they finished there in Oklahoma City, the $10 million facility. Just kind of showing you some of the activity out there that they participate in every day. So, a little more similar to us, I want to go to Oak Ridge, Tennessee. It's a little west of Knoxville, population of about 31,000. They host seven regattas a year. They host the Southeast Conference Championship. And it's actually the biggest source of revenue for the city that you see there at about $6 million. I want to bring it back down from that just a little bit, if I may. A little closer to us, Rockford, Illinois. Also, good friends of ours, we've actually been there several times, traveled with Purdue to be just part of the observation of how they function. Later, some of the adults in the club actually raced there in Rockford a couple of years back. They host one major event a year, and you can see the numbers there, about 2,000 rowers, 7,000 spectators. And the estimated economic impact there from that one race is about $2 million to the city. You can see it's a little crooked. The pictures may be a little small, but you can see a lot of people on the riverbanks. And then you see quite a docking mechanism. It kind of shows what it takes to put on an event like this. Bring it to us, bring it home. I see this picture. I see opportunity. And a really good base for establishing something for the future. And it's, it's just untapped potential at this point. So, just the other day, when I found out I could visit, I wanted to visit the city website and looked at the Fairbanks Park Project, which we are part of in Phase Two. You can see down low there, the Riverwalk, North End Gateway Boathouse. That's what we're talking about. Phase One, you can read it yourself, but it has a destination playground on there. Really, the river is the playground. It's a rowing, canoeing, kayaking playground. And we think when people travel here to participate in this sport, they're going to bring family members with them that will put that destination playground to use more than anything else will. We would have people traveling from St. Louis and beyond, Chicago to the west, east of Cincinnati into Ohio, Kentucky for sure, and south to come here to participate in rowing activities. They will not be arriving primarily for the destination playground. We've got all sorts of stories, and we don't have time for that, and you don't. You've got a lot of important work to do, but I just want to share a few things about us. Established in '16, first season in '17. The Texas women's coach called us in '17 or '18, and I thought it was actually a fake telephone call. Because, just to put it in perspective a little bit, if you're a football fan, to have the women's Texas coach reach out of the blue to talk with you is kind of like Nick Saban or Andy Reid, who coaches the Chiefs, calling to say, hey, could we borrow your field for a couple of days and bring our team to town? Verified that it was real. Worked with many great people throughout the city and county to host them, to store their boats in the Girl Scout Building, so they could come here to prepare for the National Championship in Indianapolis. They wanted to be someplace where people wouldn't see them. They wanted to get out and do their, their work on the river, which ended up actually being flooded that day. And what they did was they pivoted and went over to Brazil, to the lake over there, walking their boats into the lake to prepare. It was a huge deal. People coming together to make that happen and having them in our community with something that we should make, all be aware of for sure that it happened, but also that the potential is great to have more of those types of programs here to business. All the high schools in the area have participated. Middle School, St. Patrick's has participated. We've rowed everywhere in the Midwest, out into the east, into Florida now. We actually had a young man, who was our first national qualifier, go to Florida to race this year, which was the first time for our club. We've got friends all over the world, all over the country. I left Arshay's book there for you. I know, Mayor, you have a copy or two. I think Jim and I keep putting them in front of you. I would ask, I'm going to leave those. I don't know what the, what the rules of this committee are. If you don't want them, I'll come back and get them. If somebody would text me and say, hey, nobody wanted your books, or take them and give them to somebody, because Arshay's story is incredible. A member of the first all-black high school rowing team in the United States. He has been to Terre Haute half a dozen times or more because he's, it's more than a rowing counterpart. He's more of a friend of the community now, and he knows, and it's on record of him standing at the riverbanks proclaiming what a, what a venue this should be. He has a second book that's coming out. I'm not advertising. I'm just sharing something with you. In October, he is doing a book release at probably the largest rowing event in the United States in Boston, Massachusetts. And in that book, he's going to talk about Terre Haute. I'm going to get into a little bit of our barriers. 10 years, and we transport and assemble and disassemble equipment greater than we row. I want to say that again. We do other stuff more than we row, and we're a rowing team. We don't have a home. We have zero visibility, which means we are not a destination. So, this is where we are today. So, the Wabash Valley Community Foundation, actually about three years ago, awarded us a $150,000 matching grant. To date, we have achieved $205,000 in donations for a total of $355,000. So, the boathouse construction cost is not just an estimate. It was actually a detailed look at what it was going to take to construct this, this boathouse, and it's $500,000. So, we've got a $145,000 gap. We're working with Union Health also to move down the path towards a donation that would fund activities. But I think more, we're talking about tourism today. That would be more on the health, wellness, and that front. So, working with them, that is my employer. I want to be clear that that is known also. So, the request that we have today is to match what we have achieved. That would put us well beyond the $500,000 of the, for the boathouse. But if we want to actually move to the stage of hosting events, the boathouse is absolutely the most important piece, but it takes other important items to get people in the water. If we row on the river today, we go off the dock and the dock. If we row on the river today, we go off the dock, and the dock ends, and we step onto the rocks, or we step into fish hooks, or we step into glass, or we go down the bank, and we constructed a pulley system, which is completely unsafe and would be impossible to have more than us rowing on the water. If we're going to be getting six, eight, ten, twelve, fifteen, forty, eighty, a hundred clubs into the water with hundreds of boats, that just isn't going to work. So what we're seeking is beyond the five-hundred for docking, regatta equipment, and so on. And like I said, we're going to continue to seek support from other entities that help fund scholarships for kids that can't row, minor equipment, programming. We want to have corporate rowing days, all sorts of health and wellness activities going forward. We have zero paid staff. Every single tenth of a cent has gone into putting kids on the water. And on one of the slides here, I'm going to back, I don't know if I can back up. Yeah, I can. I glossed over this. We need to move from the Wabash Valley Crew to, as Oklahoma City did, the Wabash Valley Rowing Foundation. Because it's not just eighth-to-twelfth graders, this should be all ages, this should be the universities and colleges. The young man who went to Florida to row in the national championships for high schoolers actually wants to start the club at ISU next year, and he can do that, as long as he starts it. We can't do that for him. St. Mary of the Woods has rowed with us. They had four young women several years back who said, we want to go try that. And within two months, they were racing against colleges from the west, Midwest, southeast, over in Rockford, Illinois, and not in Rockford, over in Clinton, Clinton Lake or Farmersburg, et cetera. And they did well with two months of preparation. So I don't want to go too far into the history, I just want to let you know, that's where we are. And I don't want to overstep, but you're talking about filling the convention space. And Jim hates it when I do this, but I do this because I just, I like to kind of, I hear things, and I think there are opportunities. We could fill that convention center once a year. We host a very, very small-scale indoor regatta, late winter, early spring, that's a very popular time for those events. We do that as a fundraiser for our club. We do not advertise it, we do not put it out on U.S. Rowing, we do not send it across the country. But if something like that can be broadcast and you have a host facility where you could put fifty, seventy, eighty, a hundred rowing machines, people will arrive for that. But we're not equipped ourselves to be able to do that, just I want to be honest with you. But we have friends and partners who would be more than happy to see the sport grow and be a participant with us here in our community. So I'll end it there. Any questions, any other feedback, or any other information you need from us, we're happy to respond now or to provide you more detail in the coming days.
Jack and Jim, I want to commend you guys on the success. I know you're working with the YMCA, specifically the city as well, with, with the Girl Scout Building. Do you have a timeline on, you know, say we gave the request three months from now, right? What is the timeline of construction for the facility itself? And then, in the event that any government entity, CIB, city, county, just theoretically any, were to give support, would you be interested in signing a legal document stating, hey, within the time of completion of construction, if we cannot bring in a large event within three calendar years, we would consider giving twenty-five or fifty percent of what's given back?
Hundred percent yes, on the second part of the timeline to construction. We wanted to do it eight years ago, but, you know, you've got to work down the path. We would be ready. It would be contingent upon approvals and locations, and we've kind of been down the path where we presented a few times to, to different city committees and so on, and then had surveyors go in and say, oh, there's a sewer line there, it needs to move, or it can't be too close to this, it's got to be so far back out of the floodplain. I think there have been more than five different locations moved around the park. With approval, we'd be ready to go in a matter of months.
And so kind of to fill the board in with that, Wabash, I'll call them Wabash Valley Crew today, and acknowledge, hopefully soon, I call them Wabash Valley Rowing Foundation. We have gone through five different locations within Fairbanks Park, trying to find the, the right location, whether it's sewer laterals or complications with the, the DNR. I think we're getting close with a proposed solution that we're working through with a current building. It's a kind of a partnership with the YMCA. So I, I guess kind of to close out my comment, I think for this board, once we have a solid answer on a location, whether it be the, the building or new construction, I think that would be appropriate for this board to, to hear the financial request from this organization. I do think that, you know, we'll have to work through legally what we are able to do with clawbacks. I don't even know if we can do that, that was just an idea that I had. But when you're looking at, I looked at Rockford, Illinois, a lot more than I looked at Oklahoma City, just based off of its size. And when I'm hearing, you know, one single outdoor event, two-point-one million generated, and I look at a request, whether it be the city or the CIB for three-hundred-thousand dollars, that's when I see opportunity to pay that request off pretty, pretty quickly over time. So I do believe this is of financial value to this board, as well as to the city, and we'll continue to work with them, and hopefully the, the city can get what we need to done with the DNR and with other outside groups to get them the approval they need to, to build. But I do want to acknowledge that we're getting closer on that.
Thank you.
Karen?
So one of the things that helps tourism is when people stay here more than one night. So a two-night event or a weekend-long event. Tell me, if you had all of these things that you list in the next slide, how likely would it be, and how many competitions would we be able to host? How likely would it be we would be able to get a championship or a semifinal or, or something within the next three years?
A championship in the next three years would be a reach. A large-scale event, even if it's one day of actual rowing, requires a team to come in the day before. They haul their equipment, setting up within the park or the location, setting their equipment up so it's ready for the next day. So they're here that night. The next day is a rowing day. Races generally start at about seven AM and go until five, six PM the next day. So depending on travel, we would, may have some people stay that, that night as well. But it would be a two-night stay, even with a moderately-sized event.
And would you, would be middle school, high school, and college, or?
So what it really would be is middle school, high school, college, people like us, cancer groups. Recovery on Water is a rowing program for cancer survivors who have programs set up in communities and race in communities. There, at the Rockford Event, there were rowers in their eighties. It is all ages, it is truly all ages. And you don't need a ball, you need a pair of socks and a pair of shorts and a T-shirt.
So my next question is, are you guys set up in order to be able to organize all of these events and different kinds of groups? So adult amateurs, what I would call that, all the others?
Are we?
Are you set up to be able to secure the competitions and to put them on as a, as a volunteer program?
Yes, with a lot of help from our friends. It would require, it would require a village. But we have some very, very good friends. The retired rowing coach from Culver Academies actually retired out in Colorado to be near his family. He played a large part in us getting started. If you've never been to Culver Academies, it's worth a visit, and so is their several million-dollar boathouse. He would come back to help organize it. Indianapolis would help us set it up. It's interesting that U.S. Rowing has a presence in Indianapolis. There are a large number of sanctioned referees, you have to have sanctioned referees put these events on. It has to be managed from a timing perspective precisely. Jim and I alone will not be able to do that, but we could pull the resources, because if U.S. Rowing is going to attach their, their sanctioning body to us, they're going to assist us in making sure it's set up, you know, to the T. We could do scrimmages, though. We could do overnight or two-night scrimmages with a lot less help and a lot less formal, but it would show a presence within the park and within the community that, you know, what are all these spaceships that just landed in our community, because that's truly what it looks like when these clubs show up.
Jack, I will add, I know Kylie, our Assistant Parks Superintendent, she's, we've started to go down the rabbit hole of if they were to do a scrimmage or even a race itself, what support would be needed from Terre Haute Parks, Terre Haute Streets, and Terre Haute Police Department? And we've, we've come up with two tentative plans, it's all based on the number of boats they get. Do I believe that the city staff, public safety, as well as Parks Department could support it? Yeah, I, I do. And I think it goes well with the YMCA project. One thing that I've noticed with a lot of these is you've got your boathouse, and then you also have some sort of like host facility, like where people can use the bathroom, where people can go for check-in. I, I don't think this could happen without the help of the Community Foundation for the YMCA, as well as for the boathouse. Both those projects play into our Fairbanks master plan. So I do think the city could help from a management of what's going on outside of the water, but I do acknowledge, and, and I know we've had conversations about what U.S. Rowing would be able to send us in terms of staffing support and feel comfortable.
We just launched Rain the Ride Across Indiana from Fairbanks Park this year for the first time, switching club teams from Bloomington to Indy, and then, so the Parks Department, the Y, the city, the county did a great job of transitioning to a new location at Fairbanks Park. It served very well. It's a great, great venue for sports, sports tourism makes up eighty to eighty-five percent of our tourism in Terre Haute. But from a tourism perspective, we need the championships, the, the groups that are going to bring in the overnight, the one-night, two-night stays, weekend types of events, so.
If I could ask just a couple of questions, Jack, for clarification. Number one, what is, what is the specific ask here today? And thank you for coming. It's good to hear something positive about Wabash River. Being a, a lifelong resident, anything doing besides, you know, a dump site is exciting to meet and good to hear. And I'm one of the few who, who swam in the Wabash River, and I know it's kind of, it's, it's dicey, it's when you get in there. So it's good to hear. So what is the specific ask, and what is the, as far as local colleges, one thing Terrell has is a lot of schooling. What's the, from Indiana State, maybe Ivy Tech, Rose Holman, what's their interest in?
Thank you. So the ask today is to match what we've achieved. So we've achieved three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars, so we're requesting to match that. That's, that's the specific request. To go to the colleges, significant interest from them, and that would catapult this to a whole nother place. The bigger we get as we exist, the harder it becomes to pull off. That's because of the access. We've actually pivoted lately from the river to the lake in West Terre Haute, because it's so much easier to walk in off the beach there into the water, which is not an easy task for somebody when it's forty degrees outside to step into the water. So to host events large-scale, have people in the water every day, including the colleges, we've got to be able to get our boat out of the boathouse and on the water without freezing, because we row and it's forty degrees or higher, as long as the water is forty degrees. So access, access, access. St. Mary of the Woods rode that one year with those four young women. Two graduated, one got married, and one joined the military after that year. They were so excited. You can ask anybody, you can ask Brendan Randolph, if a rowing still something they desire to pursue, and I'm not going to speak for him, but I think he's going to say absolutely. That was a, a major success for them that year. They did row in one event against Washington State, Miami of Ohio, University of Chicago, and some other schools. And these young women actually beat the boat from the University of Chicago, and we have a picture of these young women passing that boat. And something you're not supposed to do in rowing is look at your competition, and they've got their heads turned and their mouths open, because they're getting passed by this club that nobody's ever heard of. They didn't win the race, but they beat Chicago, and we're always going to carry that with us as a kind of a little badge, and they do too. Indiana State has been interested since the beginning, but it needs to start as a club, and it needs to start being student-generated. We've, trying to entice young people who have no concept of the sport to form a club is very hard to do. It's like, do you want to start a polo club? And, you know, I've never played polo, so I don't have an interest in that. But the young man who's going to Indiana State next year has made it clear he wants to form the club, and he can, because he rows a boat by himself. So he's a, it's a single, one person, the boat. He will form that club, and he will compete next year, and it can grow from there. Rose Holman is ideal. There are clubs from colleges that size across the United States. There is interest there. There was a young woman there several years back who wanted to form the club. She moved here from Washington, DC. We went out and did a, a presentation. She had about fifteen of her classmates join her. Actually, one of the young people in that audience saw one of my slides, saw, he didn't know it was my son, it was a boat of four young men, and he was like, I raced against that guy. And I don't know where he was from, we had a conversation, but there were about six or eight young adults at Rose Holman that wanted to start the club. We could not at that time get them past the liability component, but that is not a sticking point forever for them. They've seen and worked with us and heard what we're doing now for the last eight years. They know that that would be a great offering also at Rose Holman. I think if you talk to Rob Coons, he would say the same thing, but again, I'm not here to speak for him, I just know that there's sincere interest.
Jack, what, tell me more about what the project is, because I know it's, there's been several iterations over the years. I've heard, you know, buildings adjacent to the Y, new construction. Is that nailed down yet, or is that still somewhat in flux?
I, I would, it's in flux, to be honest with you. We can do either. We can fit into either, we need the funding to be able to do that. It would take some work, if it's something that is going to be retrofitted to turn it into a boathouse, but the work could be done. If I'm going to talk about ideal situation, it'd be great to have a beacon, a, something that catches your eye when you drive up and down first or, you know, into town. There is no beacon right now, to have it tucked away in a corner. I mean, it would work, but I think ideally, somebody will be here in thirty years saying, hey, we need to build this second, third, or fourth boathouse to, to grow this foundation. So in flux, and either would work. And it really will come down to what's available, what's possible, and what, what can we do most cost efficiently?
And just so unclear, once you get to the five-hundred-thousand mark, that really kicks things off to get moving, and then the remainder was more like loose equipment, those types of items?
Yeah, I'd go, it's beyond loose equipment. The docking system itself is not cheap. It can, and if you ask me, what does it cost to have a dock? It depends. You can buy docking systems that are forty, sixty, eighty feet, you know, as you attach segments, that can be thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. You can have colleges with engineering students that develop floating docks, much less than that. We'd love for that to be a project, you know, in some of the schools. We go to Rockford, and, and they've got floating docks made out of barrels and wood planks that are phenomenal, and they have the purchase type. So the pricing varies. So the pricing varies. Safety boats are critical. There are great boats. We never go on the water without a safety boat. But for an event, you need to have really specific flat boats that are wakeless, that troll along on the perimeters of the course and at midpoints of the course to make sure people are safe. And if somebody were to come out of a boat, you can pull them out quickly without pulling them over the, like the hull of the boat. They're flat and people can climb right in. So those types of boats cost twenty, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. We do not have anything like that. We use John Boat right now, which is what most clubs do. But when it comes to event time, we want to make sure we have the right equipment.
I can speak from experience. These guys are relentless. They, they are not going away. I was at their beck and call for, oh, several years, I think. And I think that pulley system you alluded to earlier that isn't safe, I think I had something to do with that.
Yes, you did.
But no, I applaud you guys. You've, you've really put, both you and Jim have put a lot of time and effort and, you know, it's good to watch. I'm hopeful we can, we can help support you.
We appreciate that. Not the construction, it's not that the construction wasn't safe, it's just what we have to do to get there.
I've got thick skin, it's fine, Jack.
You do sound personal.
Jack, I think to kind of close us out of this one, I do, I know the city attorney's having a conversation today with Michael Scapulis about the timeline of one of our courses of action, which is the Girl Scout building, which is already constructed. And then Kylie and Marcus have a follow-up meeting trying to land that last A location. So that way we develop two plans from the city's end that we would be able to facilitate. I think it's good to kind of put a timeline to this. I think that helps the city as well as your organization with fundraising. So I'm going to push the city staff by December thirty-first this year to have at least one of those two options available, should your organization choose to take that. Once we get to that step, I think, or sorry, as we get closer to that step, I think it's right then for this board to have a conversation around funding. And so with that, I think it's, I don't think we need to table this, right? I don't think any actions needed?
There's no action today. Simply just information, so.
I think we'll, we'll stay in contact the next couple of months as we go through the legal process of building one, as well as the location, if needed, of building two.
Appreciate that. And I would say, you know, I work in an organization or an industry where there, we have a lot of requests us to start programs and those types of things. And I don't know what the structure is here, what the history is with other people who have received funds, but we would be very, very happy to return on a regular basis, annual basis, and show you where we are, what we've achieved, what those funds have gone to, and what the revenue has been back when we start hosting events. So we would plan on doing that on your timeline, no timeline, or whatever you would desire.
Jack, real quick before you go, I will send you an email with mostly questions so you don't have to answer today. The one question is, is the Wabash Valley Crew a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
Okay. Karen, this might be a question for you, but I understand the DNR just awarded Coyuga a grant for an entryway into the Wabash River. From a regional perspective, Jack, do you see something like that happening with the river going up north a little bit to Vermillion County? Would your crew or would those boat folks go up there and come here?
How far is that?
It's about thirty miles, forty miles, I would say.
That would be a fun time. You mean to row there to here?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably not.
Okay.
There is actually a marathon that's hosted in Chicago where people actually do a twenty-six mile boat race like this. But the river's got to be pristine and perfect, and the depth has to be right all along the way. Debris, there can be none. So I would say not here on this river.
And then my last question, which again you have to answer today, is about your docking system and the flux of how the river rises and then late summer, I mean, you can walk across the river and how that might play a role in that. So just something to think about.
Yeah, I would say, you know, rivers do what rivers do.
Yeah.
There's no perfect scenario with the help that we've had in the past. It was set up looking at a hundred-year history of water levels and actually has functioned very well for us. There's a point where it gets too high and too fast also, too low, we cannot, but we have actually, and it wasn't perfect when the water was at one foot. We took boats out and we probably could have walked alongside them. We actually snagged the engine, the motor with the propeller a couple of times the water was so low. But there are specific times a year that would be, to answer your question, specific times a year where the water level is better for events like this, and we would host fall events.
Sure.
Jack, if the board decided to get you to that five hundred thousand dollar mark in one fiscal year and, you know, the following fiscal year provide the second half of that request, does that allow you to start construction? And then once we see things are moving, you know, we could act on the second half of that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I think that kind of ties to maybe the mayor's, the clawback, but maybe in a little bit easier, easier way. And then I'll conclude with this. I looked up, I probably shouldn't know this, but the mission of the CIB is to invest in projects and opportunities that will create economic tourism, more robust quality of life, and advance west-central Indiana. So I think, I think you check those boxes. So I'm definitely interested in.
Thank you.
In the project.
Can I add one more thing?
Yep.
So I would love to see the river be a championship course. Terre Haute's kind of known for that with the Laverne Gibson course being nationally known, the bike, Griffith Bike Park being also a nationally-known course. We've got some great dirt racetracks as well. So, and the fact that we've got these three colleges that bring all kinds of people into town is great, so.
Thank you.
John?
One final question. As, as Brian has said, this is in our wheelhouse. This is why we were developed, you know, seven or eight years ago. And it lands right squarely in our wheelhouse, if you'll pardon the pun there. You know, look at the, look at the track out east. Started with a few hundred people running around the track out there, and now it's thousands of people. And it didn't happen overnight, right?
Right.
So I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
Mr. Brewer, anything? Mayor? All right, if you have any questions for Jack, I would encourage you to reach out. And then over the next thirty or forty-five days, we'll try to come to some type of conclusion on how to move forward.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the last thing in new business today is simply a proposal for the roof of the Indiana Theater. It's for a total of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. For us to come up with bid documents and to move forward with putting a roof on the theater, we have to have something like this accomplished. They're going to do several drill tests on the roof. We've wanted there's more valleys and integral, whatever it is on the roof, that's, we need to investigate further. This company's worked in the community before, specifically for the school corporation. Brian brought them in town and he and I both met with them. This proposal gets us to that point. And then if we wanted to do more with this, this moisture management group to keep the roofers accountable, if we do award a contract to a roofer, they could be involved with that. Of course, it would be in addition to this contract. But would appreciate action on this today. Their timeframe was to, what, two months, Brian, I think? Arrive on site, takes two months for them to come up with all the information they need to properly bid it out. I don't think we'll have any, we could possibly award a contract to a roofer this year, maybe, but the work probably wouldn't happen until 2026. So, any questions?
Chris, may I add something?
Sure.
I mean, what's before us now is really a due diligence assessment of the building. So they come out on site, crawl around for a few days, field measure, develop a CAD drawing of the roof. And from that, they develop a budget of what it will take to replace the roof. That will come back before the board. The next step would then be to hire them to prepare the bid documents, much as an architect would, that, you know, at the conclusion of that, would then go out for bid. And then during the construction process, this company would oversee and, you know, verify the installation is in accordance to their drawing. So this is really kind of step one of three. To add to Chris's comment, I mean, this, this company, all they do is roofing. And, you know, I've seen a few roofs, and the Indiana Theater roof is, is complex and tricky as, you know, I think anything you'll find in town. So I think it's important that we have an expert in that field really evaluate it and come up with, you know, the right course of action and something that'll last for years to come. So that's really the reason behind this for them.
And once we get this budget, it could be a crazy amount of money and the CIB decides to do something or nothing. But we have to get to this point first or get somebody like this to do this before we can make a decision.
I'd like to make a motion to give you the authority to go ahead and hire this company and bring us back the answer to our many questions.
Appreciate that, John. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, any questions or comments from CIB board members? Okay. Our next regular board meeting will be back here, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine AM, with the finance committee meeting at eight-thirty. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Post.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.